San Mateo County Planning Commission Meeting of December 11, 2019 will please come to order. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Janet, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Chair Gupta?
Here.
Commissioner Santa Cruz is absent and staff is represented by Monowitz and Fox.
Thank you. We'll now move on to oral communications. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on items not on today's agenda? Do we have any speaker cards, Janet?
None.
Seeing none, we'll close the oral communications and move on to consideration of the minutes. So consideration of the minutes of November 13, 2019, Planning Commission meeting. We are going to have to review them in the next meeting. So for now, approval has been postponed. Next, we have consent items on the agenda. There are three items. One second. Do any of the commissioners have any comments or questions on those items? Janet, would you please read them in so we can vote on that?
I don't have any speakers, but I have one letter on the consent item number one that I would like to pass out.
Okay. So the first consent item on the agenda. Is the person here?
Yes. The speaker is Ed Love.
Okay.
And the consent item number one is owner Paul Moody, applicant Edward Love, file number PLN 2018-00391. The location on the property is Sunshine Valley Road in Moss Beach.
Thank you. Would the speaker like to?
Might just wrap this up for you folks to see and see a nice presentation of the project.
For clarification of the chair, Mr. Love is the architect who designed these projects, and I believe he's just providing a visual for your reference. And I've overheard him stating that he doesn't feel the need to speak today.
Speak to that.
So unless there's concerns or comments from the commissioners, I think the appropriate action would be to move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay.
I think on that note, I think I'm going to move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No. So consent agenda items one, two, and three have been approved. We move on to our regular agenda items. Janet, would you please read the item into the record?
Item number four. Owner: Point Pillar Project Developers. Applicant: Ron Stefanic. File number PLN 2017-00320. Location: Capistrano Road in Princeton.
Good morning, Chair, fellow commissioners. This is staff's presentation on item number four, which is the consideration of the adoption of an initial study and mitigated negative declaration, and a coastal development permit, use permit, designer view permit, mobile home park permit, and grading permit for the construction of a new 50-space RV park that includes seven tent camping spaces and a shower and laundry building located on a legal parcel at 240 Capistrano Road in the Princeton area of an unincorporated San Mateo County. The construction of the RV park involves 4,500 cubic yards of cut and approximately 4,600 cubic yards of fill. No trees are proposed for removal, and the project is appealable to the California Coastal Commission. Just to summarize that there, the proposed construction includes 50 RV spaces, seven tent spaces, and a shower and laundry building. Here you have the project site. To the north, we have the unincorporated area of El Granada. To the northwest, we have agricultural land. To the west and southwest, we have the existing Oceano Development. And to the east and southeast, we have Pillar Point Harbor. Next here, we have a bird's eye of the site looking towards the Oceano. Next, we have site photos here. The first one is from the corner of Capistrano and Highway 1. This is a particularly important view that has been under some contention. The view on the bottom is at the southern corner of the property looking towards Cabrillo. Here we have the site plan and landscape plan. We have a section going from Cabrillo Highway through the site showing the grade change. We have perspectives. So the first perspective is looking, I suppose, towards the RV park development at the corner at Capistrano and Highway 1. The second one is more, I suppose, north on Cabrillo Highway. And third is even more north on Cabrillo. This is the laundry and shower building, specifically the roof and floor plans. So on top, you have the original submittal of the applicant. However, due to the requirements of California Building Code, which would require a few more lavatories and toilets and showers, the applicant submitted a conceptual revision. These are the elevations of the original building. To note, the revised building would use the same design language and colors and materials. In terms of signage, the signage would go on the existing tower sign at the corner of Capistrano and Highway 1. And another sign would be on the existing monument sign at the southern corner of the property. In terms of conformance with the CCR, that's Coastside Commercial Recreation Development Standards, the project complies specifically with the protection of coastal resources, the impervious surface area, and landscaping. In terms of the general plan policies and soil resources policies, the EC measures would minimize erosion and sedimentation during construction. In terms of visual quality, the design works to protect the visual quality of the scenic corridor and maintain the character of surrounding development. In terms of the Public Works component, although the traffic report was not reviewed directly by Public Works, it was peer-reviewed by DK Associates for the accounting. The traffic report demonstrates that all intersections would operate at an acceptable level of service in all scenarios. In terms of visual resources, once again, the design works to minimize impacts on scenic views, and it meets the design standards and criteria that are applicable in the LCP and Community Design Manual. In terms of the recreation visitor-serving facilities policies, the proposed use is determined to be visitor-serving and a form of commercial recreation, which are both prioritized by LCP policy. The stays will be limited to 28 days consecutively and not more than 90 days annually. And this is captured in a condition that requires a deed restriction. In terms of the Half Moon Bay Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, the project implies. In terms of the Mobile Home Ordinance Standards, although technically this project is not in the MH zoning district, it applies. However, the RV park would be governed by the requirements of state law, the Special Occupancy Parks Act, and a special occupancy park permit will be required by California Department of Housing and Community Development. In terms of grading regulations, it meets all the findings, no significant adverse effects on the environment, complies with dust control and safety standards, and is compatible with the general plan. The grading and drainage were reviewed by the Geotechnical Section and Public Works. This project also requires a use permit. That is specifically because uses that are not listed discreetly in the permitted use list in the CCR zoning district but are deemed to be compatible with other uses in the district require a use permit. And the project was found to meet the required use permit findings. Essentially, we're talking in terms of compatibility, we're talking in terms of aesthetics, and that the project will have no adverse effects. In terms of environmental review, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared and circulated for 30 days. Comments were received from California Department of Toxic Substances Control, Caltrans, Coastal Commission, the MCC, and the public. Summarizing the two major sets of comments we got, we got comments regarding traffic and aesthetics. In terms of traffic, the Coastal Commission noted that the project should evaluate potential conflicts with commercial vehicle traffic, public coastal access along Highway 1 during peak summer periods, and evaluate any traffic issues that may arise pre and post-construction. The MCC and the public had similar sentiments in that, in general, they feel that the Midcoast Community Council, sorry, the Midcoast, has significant traffic delays on the weekends, and that trailers and RVs impact traffic more inherently because they are larger and slower-moving. Staff's response to that is that the peer-reviewed traffic impact analysis found that the project would not have a significant impact on traffic in the area. In terms of aesthetics, the Coastal Commission noted that the project should minimize impacts on scenic resources and ocean views. The MCC and the public had similar views. And also that the RV park in general would be unsightly for residents and visitors. Staff's general response to that is that the project does comply with the design review regulations. Overall, staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, and approve the CDP use permit, designer view permit, mobile home park permit, and grading permit by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval identified in the staff report. That concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions. The traffic consultant that performed the peer view for the county is present for any questions regarding the county's review of the traffic reports. The applicant is also present as well as his traffic consultants.
Thank you, Ramel. Commissioner Ketchum?
Thanks for your presentation and for including a few slides for me to show. I apologize, I have a lot of questions for you.
That's okay.
But could we just start with the first slide I had?
Sure.
So just a little background first. When the Harbor Village subdivision and the hotel, restaurant, and shopping mall were approved in 1989, the community tried to get the project reduced in size and moved to the west to preserve the ocean views from the scenic highway. They also asked without success for an open space easement over the parcel where the RV park is now proposed. Considering the scale of the Harbor Village and the Oceano Development and the row of cypress trees that were then planted along the highway, preservation of the remaining view corridor could be considered relatively minor contribution. I just wanted to show you the scale of what has occurred here and the smaller piece. And also, just to point out, the other side of Capistrano Road at the Harbor District is significantly lower grade. And both the Highway 1 and Capistrano Road adjacent to this parcel are five lanes wide. This is the busiest intersection in the Midcoast. So I have a question about the tent camping, which was originally proposed along the north side of the RV park next to the agricultural field, and then it was moved to the front next to Capistrano to swap for the first row of RVs for less view blocking. So has there been any consideration for the tent camping experience such as traffic noise and lack of privacy along Capistrano Road or exposure to ag operations along the back?
So in terms of the tent camping spaces, there has been a little bit of a conflict when we're talking about screening specifically. And in some ways, there's a desire to screen the entire RV park, but in other ways, nobody wants certain views blocked. And so there was a compromise that was made. And in terms of the landscape design in that area specifically that you've pointed for the proposed easement, the tent camping spaces were considered, I suppose, in terms of outright height, are lower than the RVs.
Right.
And the plantings in those areas were also much lower than what's in the rest of the park. And so that's what staff use in the consideration of where those tent camping spaces are. The traffic noise admittedly was not one of the things that we evaluated.
Okay, so the traffic counts and weather. The date of the traffic counts for the weekend peak hour existing conditions was Saturday, May 4, 2017. The tables indicate the date but not the weather conditions, which have a significant impact on weekend peak hour traffic on the coast side. I live about a mile from the project, and my rain gauge records for that date show 1.2 inches for the 24-hour period ending Sunday 8 a.m. So my question is, shouldn't the weather be considered and traffic counts be done when conditions are representative of what is intended to be measured? This is not just about this project, but, you know, in general. As far as county policy on that.
I don't have any established policy. I think it's a fair comment. I was not aware that the counts were taken on a rainy day. How that may have affected the counts are, I think, speculative, but certainly could have an impact. So I think your point is well taken. There is no established policy that the county has about when the traffic counts should be taken. And I don't know if staff had any additional conversations with the applicant about that.
So I'm not going to quibble over this. My rain gauge is not a secure source. But I just wanted to point out that in the future, when the traffic counts are done, if there's a notation of the weather and also perhaps instructions to the people doing the counting, particularly for weekend peak hour, that would be important. So the driveway turning movements, the condition of approval is 52, requires that before the building permit is issued, sufficient clearance be demonstrated for large RVs on the access driveway. So my question is, shouldn't that be required now so the CDP could include RV size limitations?
In response to that, I would say that that's a question for our traffic consultant. They did the review of, I suppose, those radiuses and whether they could accommodate the RV sizes proposed. I can defer to our traffic consultant if you'd like me to bring him up.
Oh, not right now?
Okay.
I just have follow-up, some questions. The parking spaces, the required parking for the Harbor Village and the Oceano Hotel includes 10 existing parallel parking spaces along that access driveway by Metzaluna. They're not included on the site plan. So my question is, will those parking spaces be removed to accommodate the turning movements of the large RVs?
That question actually would be appropriate for the applicants.
Okay. Visual quality. The renderings for the 2015 plan, this project started in 2015, for the RV park had robust landscape screening along Capistrano Road and Highway 1 to show the RVs would be completely hidden from those viewpoints, which would be in tune with general community feeling that an RV park detracts from the scenic view. The current plan has no space to provide that screening, so the south side of the RV park is in full view of northbound Highway 1 and along Capistrano Road. Was there any consideration of the Midcoast Council's 2018 request to eliminate some RV spaces in order to provide that screening outside that view corridor?
I'm sorry, could you clarify, outside of the corridor?
Well, the screening was removed from the view corridor, but now there's no space to screen where the RVs are. And the MCC letter, which wasn't included in your staff report from 2018, had asked for that to be addressed by eliminating some RV spaces and putting the screening there, sort of at the edge of that red line, but outside the view corridor. And that was not... Did you consider that request?
That request was considered. However, in conversations with the applicant regarding the landscaping in general, there was a general sentiment that that actually may still block some views. I would like to let the applicant speak on that more. As with his conversations with his landscape architect, they came and made these, I suppose, these compromises.
Okay. So the next slide, please.
Sure.
This is the existing harbor view of concern to the community seen from Highway 1. The white picket fence in the distance relates to the blue water view. This relates the blue water view to the elevation of Capistrano Road as it slopes gently downhill. So you can see what anything in the foreground, how that will affect, and realize the relationship to the elevation of Capistrano Road. I just wanted to point that out. And you can also see that the foreground and the image between here and Capistrano Road, whatever is there can greatly enhance the quality of the view and a sense of place for the harbor gateway, or it can detract from it or block it. So just wanted to point that out. Next slide. So this site plan with the lines is taken from the 2018 MCC letter. The lines were added to indicate the existing harbor view corridor. And you can see it encroaching into the view are three RV sites, a trash enclosure, and the part of the shower laundry building. Although the staff report indicates that is not the case, you can also see there's no space in the current configuration for sufficient landscaping to screen the RVs from the south. The site section that you mentioned in your report basically was intended, I suppose, to explain how the views would be affected per elevations. But it was across the middle of the RV park where the trees already block the view, and it didn't give any relationship, it didn't show the Capistrano Road elevation or the available ocean view. So we don't, just making that point. So this is the landscape plan. The staff report says the view corridor is protected because the landscape plan is limited to ground cover and low-growing shrubs in that area. But the plan here shows a perimeter hedge of Escalonia, which is naturally 6 to 15 feet tall, interspersed with invasive Pride of Madeira, which is 5 to 6 feet tall, and a group of strawberry trees, which are easily 20 feet or more tall, between the laundry shower building and Capistrano Road. So my question is, was any consideration given to the 2018 MCC comments in this regard and the desire for a more naturally, locally native landscape aesthetic to provide a sense of place for the harbor gateway?
Sure. So let me answer the question on landscape planting selection first. So staff did actually have a conversation with the project landscape architect. However, there was a concern that with such a heavily trafficked area that certain, I suppose, native plants would not thrive in an area like this. And so based on that landscape architect's general knowledge of the plants in this area, he selected basically tougher plants, plants that would be able to handle the traffic here. In terms of the consideration of the clear view easement as a whole, as I mentioned, during staff's review, the landscaping in this area in general was lower. One of the original proposals actually included trees all the way across Capistrano. And at that time, we noted that that may not be feasible right along Capistrano because of, literally because of this clear view easement. And so the plant material was, I suppose, reduced in height and lowered. And so instead of having the full-on mature trees, we instead have the shrubs and lower-growing ground cover. And so that was the consideration in terms of this clear view easement and the MCC's 2018 letter.
Can I ask a follow-up question when you're done?
Sure.
When you're done?
On this one?
Yeah.
Might as well.
So the consideration for the landscape was for something that is hardier for the conditions of the location?
Correct.
So I noticed some of the plants were invasive. So that was an acceptable trade-off, you're saying?
So I also had, and staff had, a conversation with the project landscape architect regarding that. And there was a contention of what would be considered invasive and what is not considered invasive in the state of California, based on this landscape architect's knowledge. And so this is the plan presented to you now. Of course, as the Planning Commission, you have the discretion to make decisions on the plant selection as you see fit. However, based on staff's conversation with the project landscape architect, this was the conclusion that he had, that these plants thrive on the coast and would thrive in this situation, and would be more robust than some of the more native selections. The project applicant can speak on this further.
Pardon?
I'm sorry? The project applicant can speak on this further.
Okay. Yeah, I just, the MCC 2018 letter went into the landscaping, the aesthetic, all these issues in some detail. And that was never responded to, was basically, I just, so this is, okay. So and then the other point about landscaping is, was there any thought given to the MCC and the Coastal Commission staff comments about a more natural transition and buffer along the ag field instead of the row of non-native trees?
That was considered. However, I'll let the applicant speak on that further as to the reasons why they're proposing RV parks on that side. However, staff did take that into consideration, yes.
Although the trees are still there?
Correct.
Okay. Almost done, sorry.
No worries.
About resident managers, so the, how many RV spaces are set aside in order to have an onsite manager present at all times? Or would that function happen from the hotel? Perhaps the applicant, I can ask that later. And the length of stay monitoring, the Oceano Hotel major condominium subdivision in 20, whenever it happened, included a condition of approval requiring record-keeping for owner's length of stay to ensure visitor-serving availability. So wouldn't it be appropriate to do the same for the RV park visitors? I believe that the Pillar Point Harbor RV Park, run by the same applicant, has that type of condition.
So speaking on that, the condition that's in the staff report comes directly, almost cut and paste, from the LCP. It's a required deed restriction, requiring that stays are limited to 28 days. Well, the LCP requires that they have, they can have no more than 29 days of consecutive stays or 90 days annually. The applicant proposed for 28, and so we adjusted accordingly. However, in terms of enforcement of those stays, if necessary, the code compliance section could be employed to take a look at this matter. But that is how staff is looking at it at the time.
So there's no thought to monitoring like that as is done for the hotel itself and the other RV park?
That was not considered for this project, no.
Okay. Then, last subject here, grading plan. The plan shows a net import of 75 cubic yards of fill. So pardon me, but I don't understand grading too much, but how is the site elevation to be lowered by one foot with a net import of fill?
I will let the applicant speak on the further details of grading. However, just to note, the grading was reviewed by our Geotechnical Section and found to be compliant with our standards.
Okay, yeah, I'm just not picturing it, how you get a lowering, okay.
So the cut and fill are almost balanced. As I noted in the description, the cut is around 4,500. The fill is about 4,575. So it is relatively balanced. The fill is being brought in, majority of that fill is being brought in from outside.
I'm just saying that they're saying that, okay, the view's going to be better because the whole thing's going to get a foot lower. So how does that happen?
So the site is being lowered. It is being flattened slightly. And so in terms of how high the RVs are in general, you would have a reduction of visual height, I suppose, relative to Cabrillo. And so that's how staff looked at that, if that clarifies that for you.
No, I'm sorry, but that's whatever. Okay, so my last question here. Shouldn't we have a requirement that the prime ag topsoil be carefully stored and treated as an important resource, such as the condition of approval for Corinda Los Trancos Restoration Project?
Admittedly, that was not considered with this project. However, it is something that we could consider.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have.
Questions? Commissioner Hanson?
Sure. Could you bring the slide up of the restroom?
Of the facility, sure.
The interior?
The interior, sure, yes.
Okay, so the... What's being proposed is the lower one?
Yes.
Which was not in our package.
It wasn't attachment to your package. It was, they were standalone, they were by themselves.
Because I saw the top one, I didn't see the second one. I must have jumped over it or something. Okay, so... Is it a public restroom or shower area? I mean, or is it just limited to the RV?
It would be for the patrons of the RV park solely.
Okay, so it is tightly contained in terms of numbers?
Yeah, the calculation of the number of facilities is based on the number of RVs. The, yeah, the calculation of the number of facilities is based on the number of RV spaces.
I, I understand that, I'm just trying to figure who's going to use it.
Right. It would be patrons of the park.
Okay, because we seem to not have enough facilities out there and people are changing clothes on the street and things like that. And I was wondering, are they moving in here because it was an opportunity or not? And so it's going to be restricted. So this, so we're talking about three stalls per sex. Remind me how many units would be there?
Sorry, it's fifty RVs and seven tent spaces.
Yeah. Okay. I'm just trying to figure out the capacity of peak demand. And one of my pet peeves is how we define equality in bathrooms, you know, because we have three stalls for women, three stalls for men, but the wait time is 50% longer for women. And to me, wait time should be equal in my mind. I'm tired of waiting for my wife to get through the line, so. So I just trying to run, is this fair enough? Okay, thank you.
And thank you for a very good question. You answered, you covered some of the things I was worried about.
I do have a question. How far are other similar facilities from this particular?
Commissioner Ramirez, do you mean other RV parks?
Other RV parks, yeah.
I see, I see. Let me, in terms of what's directly nearby, let me see if I can capture it here. So there is another RV park. If you're going, I suppose, that southeast towards Highway One, I would, it's relatively close by, maybe about half, half a mile or so, give or take. There, there is one there. That, that is the closest one nearby.
Do you know about what the capacity of that one would be?
That I don't, however, I believe the applicant knows the answer to that.
It's 48 spaces now, and it's just perceived and after-the-fact CDP, and it will be reduced to 40. It's under the ownership of the same applicant.
So half, half a mile, is that the only one? I thought, I thought there was another one. There's two.
There's three within four miles.
We have a situation where the parking lot at the harbor is being used for RVs to park and stay. They have, the harbor district has not received a permit for that use yet. So there is active use of the parking lot by RVs, but it's not an established or legal facility at this point. So I think there's this site, there's the site further to the south that Rumel and Commissioner Ketchum identified, and then there's some RV use currently occurring in the harbor itself.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Maybe this is a question for the applicant, but let me see if there's some, you can shed some light. Were, were any information taken out of these existing RV parks? Anything in the sense that there were some issues there which we are making sure don't happen here?
Commissioner Gupta, the one thing I would note is the length of stays. So we do, we do have that condition and deed restriction that would reflect that. That, that is the main thing that staff looked at in terms of, I suppose, other RV parks, where there's a concern that those have become a more permanent form of habitation when they're not supposed to be. The applicant can speak further on the considerations based on, I suppose, on the pros and cons of other RV parks in the area and how they implemented things into their design.
Okay. So that was just kind of following up on what Commissioner Ramirez was asking. Okay, some of my concerns are, when we have these RVs, people coming and parking their RVs and staying there for some length of time, how do we control the, or enforce the cleanliness around them? I, I know there are trash receptacles and planned for that. People hanging clothes to dry outside.
So, so speaking on that, there will be an onsite manager that will be enforcing the rules of the RV park, including trash and litter. Like you said, there are also two trash enclosures available onsite for people to use as well. And so that, applicants can speak on that further?
It's the manager's
Correct.
job to enforce those kind of things.
On a daily basis, yes.
On a daily basis, okay. Also, one of the applicant, one of the correspondents mentioned, maybe they are here to speak about that, but, but one of them mentioned that, that we have done this study about traffic. And there was a table, a table in, I, I believe it's in the staff report, which talks about three different RV parks in the neighborhood. And they did the study on number of trips per day type.
Sure. So regarding that, that must, I'm assuming that is in the traffic impact analysis prepared by the applicant. His traffic consultant is available here, and you could ask him those questions.
Okay. Another question that I have is, can you point out to me where exactly are the tent, tent camping sites?
Sure. They are along Capistrano Road, so if you're just looking at this site plan, they would be on, all the way on the right side lining Capistrano. There are seven of them. And then at the very bottom, you have that laundry shower facility.
At the corner, on the right side?
Yes.
On the right side, okay. And I, I didn't get a chance to look at it. How, how high is the laundry facility, laundry and toilets?
The laundry facility? Yes.
Sixteen feet. And in terms of these tents, tent sites, are these tents that people put on ground? Or is, are these vehicles with the tent on them? How, how is it used?
These are tents that would be put on the ground.
On the ground?
Yes.
Okay. So, and there's enough room there for, for these visitors to park their vehicle?
Yes, there, there is an adjacent parking space by each one of them. And so they can park directly there and then put their tent up.
Can I do a follow-up to that?
Of course.
Is, is it in this parking lot also? Or are you talking about, for, for, for the people in the tents, are you talking about an additional parking somewhere else?
No, I am, I'm speaking directly on the site. So you have the tent space, and then you have an adjacent parking space right next to the tent space. And so someone could, in theory, drive up directly to the space and set up their tent, and their car is right beside them.
I think it's the shaded rectangular squares are actually spaces where private vehicles could be parked. There's a picnic table, and then the area between the parking spot and the fence looks to be like the area where the tents would be erected.
And is, is this a gated area?
I'm sorry.
Is there a controlled entry?
No, no, no.
So anybody can walk in and pitch their tent?
You'll notice there's a four-foot perimeter fence that goes around the site. So the only way to get within the site would be to go into that front entry driveway. So you couldn't walk in from any areas of the site, you would have to walk in the primary entrance.
Okay. But it's not controlled?
No.
So is, is this already fenced? The, the pictures that we have seen in the drawing, or is the fence going to be put in later on?
The site is currently fenced. However, the proposed fence is not the fence that you see currently on site. The proposed fence is a split rail, a wood split rail fence. And so it, it will look much different than the, the white fence that they have now. It'll have a natural stain.
There's no picture of that in the package?
There is a
As to what the fence looks like?
There is a detail in the landscape plan?
It shows the other, different fence.
Oh, it's the other fence.
It shows that white picket fence.
It shows post and wire fence.
Right. So no, we, we do not have a photo of that other fence. However, it would be a standard split rail fence as proposed by the applicant.
I was also reading in the staff report that the Midcoast Community Council, they were strongly recommending the reducing the number of RV spaces to 25. How, how, how did we respond to that?
So
How did we satisfy them that it's okay to go with 50?
Sure. So obviously, the applicant has proposed 50. He has received all of these comments, including the MCC's comment to reduce the parking spaces. He can speak further on any potential reductions. The staff did consider that comment, but at the same time, as I mentioned previously, this project did meet the findings and our regulations. And so it is, it's presented this way to you today. But the applicant can speak on this further, on any potential reductions.
And is there a standard for these, standard height for RVs?
I, I will let the applicant speak on that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, I think that pretty much answers my questions. Commissioner Hansen?
Yes. So is attachment C, the plans we're trying to approve today?
So attachment C reflects those, are the set of plans you would be approving today?
I just reviewed my attachment C, and it did not have the revised
So to, to go on that further, it's actually a separate attachment. It's further down, I believe it might be attachment K. I, I could take a look for you and tell you which attachment it is. But there's essentially two sheets in that attachment. It's a site plan and the floor plan and roof plan on the second sheet.
Attachment A is the conditions of approval, things like that. B is?
The landscape plan that we're approving today does not have the split rail fence. It has entirely different fence on it.
Yeah. I haven't figured.
One moment. I will note, however, that the, the revised building you see today is, was conceptual. And so it, it was conceptual based on building code. And it was reviewed by the building official and, and a conceptual, in a conceptual standpoint, he said it was fine.
So to help me, what other changes have occurred that I may not have seen or reviewed by looking?
Commissioner Hansen, that would be the main one. That would be the main one. It is that building.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have to make sure that all these changes are reflected in the final documentation.
Absolutely. And to be clear, what occurred was our building official, when he looked at the plans, he did the fixture count and identified the need for additional fixtures. And we felt it was important that the applicant provide an updated plan showing the size of the building that would be required to accommodate the additional fixtures. And that's why you are now seeing revised plans for the bathroom.
No, I'm happy about the revised plans, but we want to make sure that they are incorporated properly. Right.
Agreed. Agreed. And to the degree there's questions about the fence type or the specifics of the landscape plan, we have the opportunity today to add any additional conditions or specific requirements that the planning commission feels is needed.
Thank you, Steve. No other questions for Rumel? Thank you, Rumel.
Sure.
Would the applicant like to speak? You have 15 minutes. Please state your name and affiliation.
My name is Ron Stefanik, and I'm the project applicant, and I live at 238 Vallejo Street, El Granada, California. And I'm here to answer any questions that recently came up. I believe I, I have the answers for most of those, and also address the aesthetics and possibly the housing issue. Of course, we have our traffic consultants here to answer any questions regarding that. We also have the, the manager of the Pillar Point RV Park here to answer any specific questions that I'm not able to answer regarding current procedures and past procedures about the long-term stay and, and, and that sort. So aside from that, rather than going into detail about the aesthetics and the view and so forth, I would rather ask, answer specific questions to those. So I could do that now or sit down?
Would you point out the revised, whatever revisions were made since your application, which are, which we can make sure that they, they are incorporated in here? Some of the ones that our project planners mentioned? Could you just list them?
You mean the changes?
The changes, yes.
Well, with the bath building, the reason why we don't have elevation is that in further drawings is that we became aware of the additional requirement for the bath facility approximately, roughly a week ago. So we didn't have much time to do a lot of drawings, so, but we came up with a conceptual drawing. The building actually increased 137 square feet. It only increased one foot in length and two and a half feet in width. So the footprint is almost roughly exactly the same. The only thing that changed in the roof structure is that we had a three-foot overhang on the previous structure, and we, we went back to a one-foot overhang that was consistent with the other overhang around the building. So the footprint itself would not affect the landscaping or, or the infiltration trenches as far as revising. And the exterior would be very similar as the colors. The only thing that's changing slightly, well, that's changing is the roof profile itself, which I feel is, is a better profile elevation-wise because of the, the stretching of the building afoot. The architect has changed that somewhat.
So this is with the bathrooms and
The bathroom laundry building, correct.
Laundry area, okay. And the other was the picket?
Okay, so there's confusion on the picket fence, and it's, it's possibly my error in not noting it, is that Lisa is, is exactly correct, is what we were proposing was a four-foot high fence and interspersed with wire mesh. And the reason for the, and there's also notation in the corner of the, of the landscape drawing for split rail fence, which we had originally. And then landscape architects changed that, and his, and the reason for him changing that is that his idea was to have landscape growth intertwined within the, the wire mesh to help shield the tents. However, I also noted that MCC comments didn't like that idea. What they wanted, what they would like to have is split rail fence and the landscaping behind the fence and not grow higher than, than three feet. And I'm very familiar with Escalonia bush. I have it at, at, at my house, and it does get to that height. However, we have our own landscape crew that works for Point Pillar project developers. They're out there once a week, and we intend to keep the landscaping trimmed to the appropriate level. I also noted the Pride of Madeira, and MCC also specifically said they don't like that plant. That can be eliminated and substituted. I also noted the trees by the, the bath laundry building, and that was also an error. I, I believe Bruce probably put that there because it was next to the building. But it does grow up to this 20-foot height, and that obviously has to be eliminated. We do have trees on the back wall by the black vinyl fence. We do have trees on the back wall by the black vinyl fence, which is three feet high. And we put those there to help screed. Not, it's not so much for the view, it's also for possible dust and all that from the farmer's field.
Thank you. Anything else in terms of changes?
No, no changes.
No other revised plans?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ketter, you had questions for applicant?
So the location of the bathroom, if this were private use, it is located right there at the most public corner there. And it would seem like you'd have less trouble with that if it were tucked back into the RV park more. And also, that would address the fact that it's in the view corridor. Had you considered that? Was there some reason it needed to be at that corner?
Yes, because with the condition that, with the tent sites, that two of the sites are required to be handicap accessible. So therefore, the restroom building was on the rear of the property previously with the tent sites. So when the tent sites moved, we moved the bath building to accommodate the handicap tenters. As far as being close to the corner and to answer a question about the onsite manager, and like I say, we have Terry here, our manager from Pillar Point Pillar. But I would believe at least one space would be dedicated to the onsite manager as a permanent residence that there's, that they are there twenty-four-seven. And most likely a second space for a backup manager to give the, one of the managers some free time, so they're not there at least seven days a week. So possibly two sites, but they are twenty-four-seven. And they're also there to police their, or look after the cleanliness, which probably isn't going to be a problem, usually isn't a problem. And also, as far as people in that corner, most likely the locks on the bath building will be combination-coded. When a guest arrives, they will be given a combination specifically for the guests.
The parking spaces on the driveway, the tent parking spaces on the driveway, do you know if those are planned for removal in order to accommodate the RV movements?
Well, the response to that is that I would prefer to remove them. But as you mentioned out, is when we got approval for our wedding building facility, we added those parking spaces to meet the maximum parking allowed. But as you also know, being a longtime Coastside resident, as I have for over forty-five years, and also, the parking lot now holds three hundred and fifty cars. And all the time that I've been there, I've never seen the parking lot more than half full, ever. Because even though, but I understand that code-wise and ordinance-wise, we have to have that amount of parking. So therefore, I would like to eliminate those cars if possible. However, the traffic report that Hexagon Traffic Study did, they show the turning radius, they could still make that turn with those cars there, but it would be easier if they weren't, but they can still make that turn. We, the traffic report, as they all explained, will accommodate RVs forty to forty-five feet in length. Now, when you get up to forty-five feet in length, to be honest with you, there's very, very few forty-five-foot-length RVs. Most of the RVs today, being an RV-er for the past forty years, they have tended the last five years to reduce the size for two reasons. Especially the new generation of RVs, because they're exposed to more campsites in the national and the state parks. So most of the newer RVs are in the twenty-six to thirty-five-foot range. Those can easily enter the park. Forty-foot RVs can enter the park from the inside turn lane. If it's a forty-five-foot RV, which is unlikely, they have to encroach slightly on the other lane to make the turn to come in. They can also make the turn by towing a car or a trailer.
So you charge the same amount for any size RV?
Yes.
Well, I don't know, it just strikes me, the economics of this, you just made the spaces max out at thirty-five feet. You might end up with...
Well, no, they're not, because we have, I have the sizes down.
I mean, if you could adjust it to be that way, then you would help the turning issue and save, just, whatever, just. It's good to know that the new ones now are mostly twenty-five to thirty-five feet.
Yes, they are.
Thank you. Oh, I still had another question. So the Escalonia hedge along the perimeter there in the Clearview easement, so basically, this shrub, it's a very nice shrub, throws very well, but it wants to be big. And I know for fact that if you want to keep it to three feet high, you're going to be out there four times a year at least. And it's going to look like, it's going to look like a rectangular, a little tortured wall.
I agree.
Which is not the aesthetic that the MCC was hoping for.
So in regards to landscaping, is our landscape architect is Bruce Chan. Bruce has been doing projects that I've been associated with for thirty, thirty-five years. He's very, he knows the coastal climate, I feel quite well. However, if you want to suggest other vegetation plants, we're totally open to that and take those out, as long as Romel pointed out and as Bruce, with the traffic conditions in the coastal area, that they'll thrive.
Thanks.
Okay.
Questions? Any questions?
I could say just one thing on the bath building is that, and the view in general, is that the first row parking spaces are five feet below the highway. The highway's at forty-five. The first RV row parking is at elevation thirty-five. After we reduce it, the second row is eight feet down and the third row is ten feet down. But you also have to take in consideration that a car seat is two feet high and your eye level is considerably three feet high. So if you're looking straight ahead, that adds five feet to those calculations. So then there, the first row is ten feet and so on. The last, the last row is twenty feet. That's just one consideration. The other consideration is, it's true, is that, and most tents, by the way, are only three at the very highest, six feet high. The first tent sites in the park are three, are six feet lower than the road. So already, even if you're looking over the top, at grade level of the road, they're six feet down. So my feeling is the tents don't impact the view. The building itself is approximately seventeen feet within the view corridor. However, the very peak of the roof is at the edge of the arrow of the view corridor and then the roof slopes down out of six and twelve and it goes down to thirteen feet. So, true, it is impacted and the building's ten feet down, so that's three feet of view of the corner of the building. So it's not the whole mass of the building that's blocking the view, it's a small portion and the roof slope does slope down, so it lessens that view.
I guess it's hard for me to understand if you're talking about the grade below the highway, when if you look across this easement, you can clearly see the key elevation to be concerned with is the grade of Capistrana Road.
Yes.
Because you can see conveniently by the fence exactly how that impacts the view. And so the...
It's just, go ahead.
Right. I guess, you know, coming out perpendicularly from that fence and you put something there and it's the elevation of Capistrana Road compared to where you're putting it that would be key as to whether it's going to impact the view.
True. So the elevation off Capistrana Road, the grade at the corner is only three feet down and the grade at the entrance of the park is only one foot down. That's true, but that's not, that's driving down Capistrana. When you're driving down Capistrana Road, you're looking directly at the, at the view that you're, as far as being the ocean. When you're on highway, highway one, then you're looking over the RVs and the sight drops ten feet from that road all the way down to the bottom edge. I know the photograph that was shown of the pictures, it looks deceiving, like it's flat, but it's not. It'll be graded. And if you also, if you look at the cross-section and included in your plans, that's fairly accurate. And it also shows a car with a person's sight level looking over the top of the RVs.
I guess I probably couldn't be convinced unless you were to set up some kind of story pole arrangement and show it in the view.
Exactly. And I also thought of parking my RV there after it's done, so you'll get some...
That would do it, yeah.
So my question is about the concern of Midcoast Community Council. They were unhappy with the number of RV spots in there. So how do you, what do you propose to do? Because they want twenty-five spaces in this park.
Yes. So I know the panel are, you may not be concerned about the economic feasibility of projects, but at only twenty-five spaces and the high cost of improving the site, it just wouldn't be economically feasible. If that was the case, then we would probably consider doing what also is allowed, is a retail facility, a hotel facility or something else that's more economically feasible. But however, if we do something like that, the views alone are going to be much more impacted because we can go to a height of twenty-eight feet where our RVs, the standard RV, a Class B, which is a van-type RV, is only eight feet high. The Class Cs and As are only ten to ten and a half feet for the majority of them. There's a few fifth wheels that have the pop-ups that go to twelve feet, but there's few of those. So the reason why we chose an RV facility in the first place is because the low profile and protecting the view corridor, the views in general.
So if I can understand correctly, you will not be grading it, like you will not be lowering it to reduce the cost? To reduce the cost of construction or preparing?
No, no, we would much, we would much prefer to leave it as is, yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you. I just thought of another question. Just one question and let me. You have any information about occupancy of the other RV parks in the area?
Our site manager, Terry, is here, a project, the site manager, she has that information. If I could defer that question to her.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
To follow up what you were just saying about alternate types of development there, if you were to have a building, it could be located in the western part of the parcel, would not impact the views, could be architecturally desirable, wouldn't need to be screened. And then maybe some parking and landscaping in this view area. Wouldn't, it wouldn't be an issue with the building being taller, because there's plenty of room for taller building back there, because the tree's all along the highway already and the harbor, the hotel already blocks the view. So just, it's, I understand the the use for the RV park, visitor-serving and all that. It's just that this is such a prime location, this is the harbor gateway, this is the heart of the community and it just seems unfortunate. But yeah, something more architecturally attractive, didn't need to be screening, gets rid of a lot of problems. Thanks.
Question for you, Steve. So with Midcoast Community Council's comments, we can still go ahead with what the applicant is proposing?
The Midcoast Community Council is an advisory board that provides input to the planning commission on applications that are pending before you. So their input to you is advisory only and you have the ability to make whatever decision you believe is appropriate.
Thank you. So could I have the manager who can answer the occupancy question?
Terry?
Please come to the microphone and state your name.
Hi, my name is Terry Maury. I'm the manager at Pillar Point RV Park.
Okay. And my question is, you have some information about the neighboring RV parks, occupancy in there? What percentage of time it's occupied or how many spaces are occupied?
Well, for our RV park, it changes daily as RVs come and go. It's...
Do you have any kind of data collected?
No, but I could provide data. But right now in this season, it's not that busy. But normally, during the rest of the year, is a high demand for people wanting to come over and with their RVs and stay at the RV park. And so we do, it's a first-come, first-served park and we do get a lot of people coming in and out from the Bay Area and from other countries that are traveling through.
Okay. Thank you. And do you live onsite?
I'm there when I'm working, yes. I work every other week.
Okay.
And yes, I am there when I'm working, yes.
And you work, you are there twenty-four hours, basically?
Yes, yes.
So there's a facility right there to stay?
Yes.
To live?
Yes.
Okay. Did we have that on the plan yet?
Yeah, I stay in my RV.
Oh, so...
Yeah, I have a motor home and that's where I stay.
Okay. And that's the fifty-first one? Or is that part of the fifty?
At Pillar Point RV Park, it's part of the forty-nine.
Okay. It is part of.
Yes.
And it's going to be the same here in the new one?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I have a follow-up question for you?
Sure.
In this park facility that you manage now, what's the average stay around there?
The average stay? I would say three or four days.
Okay. Now, I would say the summer months are the most busiest?
Yes.
And is the facility pretty much to full capacity at that time in the summer?
It just depends on what day it is. RVs are constantly coming and going.
Well, let's say on the weekend, I would think, or something like that.
Well, you would think on the weekend, yes. But then there are travelers that'll leave on a Saturday and then somebody else can come in. So it just depends.
Okay, but let's say on your busiest time of the year. So you are pretty much full to full capacity?
We definitely fill up, yes. People love coming there.
Yeah, it's a nice area.
It's really nice, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So just pardon.
Okay.
About, so when you're on for a week, off for a week, does your RV stay there or do you take it away?
No, my RV stays there.
And so there is another person there who covers when you're not?
That's correct.
So there are two permanent RVs there for management?
That's correct.
So we could assume the same would occur for this new facility being...
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I would like to open up for the public comments. Do we have public comments?
I only have one speaker card.
Okay.
Bob Schmidt.
Okay. So we have two.
Morning Commissioners.
Please state your name clearly.
I'm Bob Schmidt. I'm a resident of the Coastside since nineteen sixty-nine. I'm a retiree since two thousand and two. And daily I walk through Pillar Point Harbor to Maverick's Beach with my second dog since retirement. That issue aside, I'm here to speak on behalf of this project. By that I mean, I'm in favor of this RV park. A lot of questions you have asked that are pertinent. I want to bring up something. I attended the Coastside and the reason I'm slumping is I have a broken back and that happened in June. That aside, I'm doing fine and my recovery is well on its way. And walking is the best thing I can do and I know all the beaches. I want to, I did attend the Coastside Community Council meeting, I think it was December fifth. There were two of us in attendance. And I noted a letter to Steve Monowitz from the Coastal Commission. And I noted a letter to Steve Monowitz from the Coastal Commission. And it said the, and this is regarding that Pillar Point is a visitor's destination. And the upper parking lot yesterday had twelve RVs, and it's a slow day. Weekends and other days, thirty to forty RVs, especially during this weekend where crab season will open, there'll be a lot of RVs. The Coastal Commission has told the harbor, they're in violation of running the RV park. They've been notified. And it should be noted that the RVs there, they do party. They have the, especially during crab season. But there are no sewer facilities, water hookups. In other words, that parking lot should be for boat launches. And consequently, because RVs are in that upper parking lot, I live one block from the harbor, by the way, at two hundred Sevillah. We get the overflow from the launch boats parked in the neighborhood and also along Highway One. Those that park along Highway One, it is a safety hazard. This is a win-win for the harbor, and I think for RV recreational users. I want to say I walked Smithfield, and Cameron's did a great job with their RV park. I think this RV park above the upper parking lot on private property, K and N, properties, I believe it is, will do an excellent job. I want to point out that they will have sewer, security, as you well talked about, laundry facilities, showers, landscaping, and more parking available because they have a large parking lot at Oceana Hotel. Safety is getting the RVs out of the upper parking lot in the harbor district. I want to read a comment from that letter that you received from the Coastal Commission to the Planning Center. "I spoke with John Moran, the general manager of the harbor district. And in apparently recent years, the campground has gotten very crowded and out of control during times leading up to the start of any big recreational fishing season, such as crab season. And many recreational boaters come to the area in RVs, U-Haul trucks, and other vehicles to park and celebrate. Since this is not a formal campground, adequate services such as water or nearby restrooms are not available, and it has been reported that some visitors have been dumping waste into storm drains. Further, the campers crowd out other visitors." Ooh, I didn't know I was on a time. Can I continue for about two more minutes?
Please wrap up.
Wrap up?
Yes.
Okay. I want to say that by dumping into the sewer drains, they're polluting the inner harbor. I walk my dog along Maverick's Beach. Subject, in fact, that inner harbor is one of the ten most polluted areas along the California coast. If we move the RVs to a top-notch RV park that will be above it and provide more parking, it's a win-win for our visitors in RVs. They'll have all facilities, including sewer, uh, facilities. The closest sewer dump right now is Kelly Park in Half Moon Bay. Wish I had a few more minutes, but thank you for your time. And just in regards to that, it took an hour and forty-five minutes to get here, and I wish I had a little more time to talk about this. Thank you. And have a good day.
Next speaker is Len Erickson.
Please state your name, you have five minutes.
My name is Len Erickson. I'm a resident of El Granada. I'm also a member of the Mid Coast Community Council, the MCC, but I'm here speaking on my own behalf. Thank you. I'll have a short handout that I put out. So, there's just a few points I want to emphasize. And looking at the handout first, I've given you a map of the three RV parking facilities that exist in the harbor. And I'll go through them in turn. First, coming from the left to right in your diagram is Pillar Point RV Park. It's noted that's targeted to be a forty RV site. It had no coastal development permit until this year. They had, the Coastal Commission notified them, and they are in the city of Half Moon Bay in terms of jurisdiction. So, they worked out their arrangement to have a CDP, and I think that's now in place. Next up is the Pillar Point Harbor. You've heard a couple of different characterizations about them. I'd like to set the record straight on some of those, as well as point out that Steve Monowitz, I think in March of this year, received from the Commission a notice that it was not CDP compliant. And I think as recently as a week ago, talking to the manager, John Moran, who wanted to address it, not necessarily, as the previous speaker said, to get rid of it, but to at least work on it, and I don't think you've connected with him yet. So, and that's basically, if you look at the nineteen ninety photo of the harbor, that whole parking lot was laid out with forty spaces to serve basically the boating population. The registration requires you be a boater or a fisherman to be there, and they control that. And as you typically know, people come there for short-term stays. They have had other things happening. I think the director, Operations Director of the district is aware of it, and they're beginning to look at it. They just got their full-time manager or executive director this week. So, I think it's important, you probably know about it, but it's in flux. But I think the impression that it just sort of got there, it's just for partying, is really a bad impression. They take the registration, you have to show you're a fishing person, et cetera, and they do party after it sometimes. And I'm sure they'd be happy if the, the new RV park went up above and people could go there to party. And finally, you have the RV park we're looking at, which is for fifty sites. So, that's a total of a hundred and forty sites essentially being proposed in that area. And I think you would like to have more information before you really take that on in total and make final decisions. So, that's a quick summary on RV parks and sites. The next one is you, a picture just to show you both what the clear view easement would require in the way of an easement on the, overlaid to the parking plan. So, as, as you've noted in discussions, it would take out the tent sites, a few RV sites, the bathhouse, et cetera. Now, in terms of the checklist that was asked to fill out on the site, it said, are you for, are you against? And I checked both. I'm a former RV owner, mine was thirty feet, so it was sort of like in the mid-range. And I'm a big fan of RV parking. What I don't understand on this layout, or just to point out, it seems that there was an earlier version in which the bathhouse and all of that and tents were at the opposite corner, which makes eminently more sense for two reasons. One, having the tents right next to Capistrano seems like a really poor idea in general. I mean, who would want to camp right next to the busy road? Furthermore, if it were back there and you were trying to back away, both in terms of reducing sites or to be away from the road, you'd have a graceful retreat relative to your planning. So, I, I don't know why it was dropped initially, but I think that merits review there, just to point out that. Finally, this bottom one is just a layout of what the community generally thinks of as the harbor gateway. This is not spelled out in any plan, but when people talk about the harbor gateway relative to both what they see or where they walk, this Capistrano Road, people looking to the right or left, and certainly having tents right as you walk down the road seems very strange. I've looked at Highway One RV parking camper, parking up and down the coast, and the only places I could find, including Francis Beach here in our state park, State Park North, State Park down at Big Sur, when you see camping and RV sites between the highway, State Route One, and the ocean, they tend to be very dispersed, laid out to sort of maximize views of the ocean, and not really packed up right against the highway, which is what we call for here. So, I just think that's really a bad idea in that place. But again, this isn't a formal designation, but certainly something you want to think about in terms of what the community sees as they come in. And just as the other speaker said, you know, people walk down there, that's how you get into the park. And while I really am a big fan of the, what the Coastal Commission has for showing here, the scenic view corridor established by what cars see. I'd really like you to think about what do people see as they walk down and sort of occupy it there. I think that's equally important. Let's see. So, I think we've, we've cleared up the number of spaces in the harbor RV parking. This is where the harbor district park has people parking. It's been there a long time, and they are aware of the situation and looking at it. They haven't come to a decision. But when you look at, do we want to go to a hundred and forty spaces, you might want to know more about that.
Please wrap up.
Okay. So, those are my comments. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions before we close? No more speakers? Okay, there's one more. Please state your name, and you have five minutes.
Good morning, Planning Commissioners. My name is Dan Hagerty, a thirty-one-year resident of El Granada. I live very nearby the proposed RV lot. I have some strong concerns about the location and the overall lasting visual impacts, traffic impacts, and the overall functionality of, of this area. I could go on about the traffic impacts as a result of the increased crossings at this delicate intersection right there that enters the harbor. Could go on about the noise impacts. People come from all over to visit, and when they're here, they want to have a good time. They're going to be out at night, having a good time. The noise, because currently where they parked their RVs at the harbor, it's, it's down low, and there's a, there's an earth berm blocking, blocking the noise. This would be elevated, not only the noise, but, you know, visual impacts. I understand that there's a large number of community members that have communicated to this Planning Commission against this project. I want to urge this commission that, you know, the concept of good planning needs to represent the community as well. The community, not only the, the people that live nearby, but the community that comes to visit and deserves a well-functioning entrance to the harbor. Years ago, a lot of people know that there's, there's serious parking issues around here. And years ago, this whole area proposed, used to be the overflow parking lot for all the salmon, salmon, crab fishing boats, trailers. Right now, they're parking on Highway One, which is not the ideal safe situation there. There's a lack of parking. I understand there's a lot of pressure for this RV park. I think that personally, it should be scaled down about half the size. I think it's very important to have a open visual, a, a, a view line. I, I believe that from Capistrano Road all the way in should be left open for a, a multipurpose use, mainly generally open, open space, non-view blocking. Could be when needed. There are major events in, in the area, and that area has been overflowed. I have pictures of during a triathlon, this whole area was filled with participants and visitors for the triathlon event. There's the Half Moon Bay Marathon, there's the surfing contest, there's, in the future, there'll be a number of other. I think this project should be scaled down. I think to mitigate the pedestrian and bicycle traffic back and forth from the RV lot to the harbor, which is the destination, I think that there should be considered to have a, a, a pedestrian underpass so that the people could go back and forth without impacting an already busy intersection. There's a lot going on at that, that's, this project is, is opposed to, to really choke that area. There's a lot of existing businesses. We've got the Graywell, or sorry, the, the Big Wave Project, which is going to be using this road. This, we need to really be thinking about the long-term effects of this, this, the impacts of this, this, this project. Now, this Planning Commission really needs to represent the community. This will be an everlasting impact for everybody. Yes, the community, we don't have a lobbying group. Yes, the Real Estate Association has an enormous amount of power and funding. The community, day in, day out, needs to get to work, needs to get their kids to bed, groceries picked up, all of that. I talk to people left and right that don't even know about this going on. It's, it's, it's the responsibility of this Planning Commission to really make sure that the community understands what's happening. And please, I urge you to represent the community and not just one developer. Thank you.
So, we have no more speakers. So, at this time, I would like to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So, the public hearing is closed. Steve, is there any response? Would you like to respond to any of the comments by the speakers?
No, I would just say that if the Commission is prepared to make a motion, that there is some cleanup language that I think we would want to consider putting into the conditions. And I'd be happy to elaborate on that when the time is right.
Thank you. Discussions? Go ahead, Commissioner Ketchum.
I just wanted to hand these out. So, this project has been off and on a big issue on the Mid Coast since two thousand and fifteen. We had a pre-application workshop, was widely attended, and much objections. And then there was another recent middle in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. Hasn't been much change since two thousand and eighteen, but, so I've been involved and, and heard community comments over the years on this project. And I've put together some notes of changes I would like to see. I don't think this can happen at the meeting today. I, I'm of the opinion we should continue this, and to date uncertain. And I just passed out, I don't know if one got to you, some of my thoughts about what I'd like to see when this comes back. Just to summarize, the, the requested height-restricted clear view easement, basically the boundary being the, along Capistrano Road, the exposed area along the highway there, and then the diagonal across the parcel goes basically from the end of the picket fence up by the highway down to the corner of the parcel, which this doesn't show. But if you went to the last slide that I had appended to the slide deck, it shows the corner of the parcel, which includes the driveway. Anyway, that gives you sort of landmarks as to what would, that is the existing view. Can you go to that slide? Janice? Anyway, that was spoken of, and the clear view easement, basically, the reason, I, I mean, I don't know the exact wording, but the, the idea is the, anything above three feet above the elevation of Capistrano would be too tall. And this needs to include development, vegetation, or even movable items like RVs, tall vehicles. Then the landscape aesthetic, aesthetic that the MCC went to and extensively in the two thousand and eighteen letter for the harbor gateway for the harbor gateway, that would provide a welcoming sense of place with harbor views and landscaping that consists primarily of local coastal natives, selected and informally arranged so they can achieve their mature size and natural form without obstructing harbor and ocean views. I think the Escalonia hedge was because they're trying to get this done in a very small amount of space. Obviously, more space is needed. And then the agricultural buffer, I would like that to be, to look again at the Coastal Commission comments and MCC comments about native plants there, a hedgerow, as the MCC suggested, and that would apply also that aesthetic along where the cypress trees are, if it is thought that that needed to be filled in. Something more, a transition to the natural area that we would appreciate for this sense of place there in the Midcoast. Then the suggestion, oh, that the RV park needs to be reduced in size at least to allow adequate space for robust landscape screening of the RVs from the south. And the, and also to encourage a redesign to create more space around the RVs would improve the visitor experience, would absorb more stormwater runoff, would improve the overall appearance of the area, whether the park is full or empty. As we spoke today, it would seem that 40 spaces would be economically feasible and perhaps a maximum 35 feet, whatever. These are just thoughts, the general topics, to demonstrate sufficient clearance for the large RVs and limit the RV size accordingly. A condition of approval that would, that topsoil would be carefully stored and treated as an important resource, a submitted, a revised landscape plan to be submitted, compliant with this harbor gateway landscape aesthetic. It would show the spit rail fence with construction details. And acquire, oh, this about the, I'm concerned about the planting islands in the RV park and how they are constructed, because I see the failure to thrive of the plantings in the Harbor Village lot. It's just barren area. There were enough planting islands, but even the ones that are there are mostly empty. And I'm concerned at how, I would like to understand the construction details of how this will be done in this new area to be sure that the planting area has a connection to the subsoil, that basically you're providing something, because I don't know what happened in the other lot. But I don't want, I would not like a repetition of that. And let's see, monitoring for length of stay. I have a suggestion here that what was applied for the recent CDP for the Pillar Point RV Park for record-keeping on length of stay, you could use that wording, the applicant is familiar with it, because that's their other park. And then finally, a bus stop. I would like to see a bus stop, at the bus stop on Capistrano, to provide extra space off the sidewalk with a bench. As I came over this morning, there were people standing around the bus stop. Anyway, that's my thought, what I hope we can do today.
Commissioner Henson?
I would support a continuance of this. I have three major reasons. And for me, a gateway design should be of the highest quality and scrutiny. You know, this is an entrance to an area. And thinking of the impact of it is, we should have everything in front of us to the way we want it. The bathroom location is not for a public benefit, so therefore, it should be not intrusive into the view corridor. So that needs to be out. The view corridor, because again, is not for a public benefit, should be maintained at the, particularly at a gateway design, at the highest standards. I find the landscape not acceptable. I would be looking for natives, but particularly non-invasive plants. Does not accept, we have too many problems on the coast side with non-invasive plants, and adding to these, it's just not acceptable. And the third is, the plans I looked at were, some of them were conceptual. I want completed plans. You know, again, I want something, what I know where we're going to get, as you can get. So I'll wait for the completed design.
I think I'm going to echo your thoughts on this. I am particularly concerned about the comments of the Midcoast Committee Council. I think that the applicant, I don't think that tried or made a big effort to try to work with the community. I would like to see, you know, whether, you know, the alternatives maybe to reducing the size of this, and definitely the views. I'm concerned about, you know, the landscaping, like how it can abstract the views into the ocean there. So I'm going to echo your sentiment on this, and I think that it can be reworked and brought back.
The size of the, or the number of RVs in the park is definitely a concern for me. And I think my fellow commissioners have suggested some of the improvements that can be made, and the applicant can come back with a revised plan. The view, definitely, it's a big, big plus for us to have this ocean view, and we definitely do not want to block it. And I don't see too much of an issue with working that out. And we have received a lot of correspondence about neighbors and people who have been longtime residents of the area who are opposed to not an RV park, but the magnitude of this park and the problems that it's going to be creating. So I think continuance is what I would be going for also. So those are my comments. So do we have?
May I make a motion? Just say, I move we continue this item to a date uncertain, or do I need to describe the?
That's adequate.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
I would just like to ask before voting that would this be given to the applicant as well?
We will share that with the applicant.
We'll share. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposition, so the motion has been continued.
The motion to continue has been passed.
Motion to continue has been passed. Is there any other instructions for the applicant?
Not at this time. We can have a conversation with them following the hearing.
Can I request a five-minute break?
Thank you. Yes, yes. We'll break for five minutes.
Thank you.